Alright, then here we go. Welcome everybody to Tunnel Meeting number 67. It's September 26th, 2023. And today we are joined by Ian, Judith, Fly, Raphael, Vani, Walter and Tommy. Thank you all so much for joining. And well, as you can see on my screen, the outline for today is, we'll start off with a workgroup updates. Then there's a couple of mentions and I do want to talk a little bit about translation specifically. Ah, I now see Sugar joining in as well. Welcome, welcome. So yeah, that's the outline for today. And a quick reminder on what is the Ambassador Program even? In the first place, we're a bunch of people working in self-organizing workgroups. And all we do is to, in light of supporting the Singularity net ecosystem and contribute to it. And you'll find like-minded people. And yeah, if you want to contribute, do add over to our Discord server, where you can find the Getting Started channel, which should get you up to speed on, on actually getting started. Hope to see you there. Then without further ado, the workgroup updates. And I think this list should be decently accurate. Starting off, pretty much right after this tunnel, there's the incubation workshop led by Fly. Fly, could you give us a little update on what's good?
Yeah, last week we started on a kind of think tank format to go through ideas and topics. Just going to find the sheet for you. If you have any topics and things that you would like to bring up. We're just kind of exploring this format as a think tank. So very open to your input and your thoughts on the topics we should cover. The things that are kind of important to you. Yeah, that's about it. And oh yeah, yeah, sandbox speak about that soon. About it.
Yeah, it's on the list, so to be continued. And then next on the list would be the Archive workgroup, which is a bi-weekly one. And we have Vanessa in the room.
Yeah, hi. Yeah, I've not been able to make these meetings for a while. So there's something that I think we all ought to be aware of. As most of you know, the Ambassador's Discord was hacked a little while ago. And unfortunately, the Archives workgroup have been building up a chunk of meetings with the idea of offering them as bounties for people to add to the archive. So there was quite a chunk of stuff that was lost. However, thanks to the fact that people like Sukra and Tommy and TiVo and lots of people actually keep copies of their documentation, so much of what we lost was actually recovered and has now been added to the archive. I'll put a little link to the archive in case anybody's not aware of it in the chat. But we'd just like to say to all workgroup leads, if you can hold on to your documentation until it's ticked off in the meeting summaries channel as added to the archive, that would be a really good safeguard against anything like this ever happening again. But yeah, we'll be doing this whole thing of uploading things manually. Maybe for less time than we think, it would be a thing of the past sooner than we think, because we are making really good progress with that. And just to say, if anybody's interested in this whole issue of archiving, preserving our history and automating that process with LLMs, our next meeting is Wednesday the 4th and we'd love to see you there.
Thanks so much. And indeed, well, fingers crossed, similar attack doesn't happen again. But yeah, it was good to see that not, not everything, everything was lost. Cool. Then next on the list, which is also on a bi-weekly schedule and is taking place tomorrow at 13 UTC is the PBL workgroup. Tavu is not around, I don't think. Quick check. Nope. I think those interested in the workshop will see that tomorrow, he changed the outline of the whole, or the Andamiyo platform, changed the whole outline of the way modules look. And in my mind, it's way clearer. Yeah, basically, we're building educational content and that's what PBL is all about. And the first module we're building is on DWork itself. It's a bit meta, but also very useful for people joining the Ambassador Program. Yeah, I'll give that, that takes place tomorrow at 13 UTC. Then I do believe somehow I took an older list because process modeling is not on the schedule for tomorrow at 15 UTC. I think for now that's put on hold. Yes, and it's, yes, that's, that's all on me using an old list for this slide. Apologies there. Next on the list would be the Strategy workgroup. And Strategy is taking place tomorrow at 16 UTC. And we have Tommy in the room. Could you give us a little update?
Rouser, 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 Strategy is here. We are working and we're progressing on our conflict resolution document. We just finished up in Strategy and throughout the ecosystem, we adopted the Code of Conduct, which I believe is now posted into Getting Started channel, the Strategy channel, and perhaps somewhere else. So all ambassadors are under the auspices of the COC. The conflict resolution is a similar initiative and you'll see in the chat channel, if you haven't found it, the document that's been cleaned up a little bit, but it's open for comment for through tomorrow and perhaps the rest of the week. And then we hope to clean up the document and present it at next Monday's, or next Tuesday's town hall for resolution, if we have a cleaned up document. And that's what Strategy's been doing. Please join us tomorrow in Discord. Thank you.
Awesome. Looking forward to that one. Let's see, next on the list is the Treasury Guild. And I don't think we have a direct representative in the room. Quick check, no we don't. I'll touch on this a little later as well. I might as well do it right now. Basically, Treasury wise, we're for Q3, we were in an experiment, working with funds requests. And well, as Q3 is about to end, we're in evaluation mode. And for Thursday's Treasury Guild meeting, that means it's starting one hour early. And so it's, it's turning into a two-hour session to allow for a bit more room. Because yeah, evaluating a whole, quite a worth of funds requests is not a one-hour task. And additionally to that, on Friday, the 29th at 12 UTC, there's another one-hour session. Just to build in a little, like, you cannot sleep a night on it. And hopefully then Friday, yeah, put conclusions to the, towards quarter three and also planning forward for Q4, how we will progress. Well, might as well throw a quick reminder to subscribe to the public calendar. Then you won't have to miss any of these meetings. It's linked in the slides and also below the video. Then that brings us to the next one being the Onboarding workgroup. Sugar, can I ask you for a little update?
Hi, everyone. Okay, so the Onboarding workgroup and the last meeting, we basically discussed the Getting Started channel and we've been able to put it up, as you guys can see. So we, we fine-tuned everything there and then we have an FAQ added also. So new members can, you know, get to read and then maybe if they have further questions, then they can access the channels. And towards the end of the meeting, we, we asked the new members who were with us, how they found the program and how they got on-boarded to other workgroups. And they related their experience to us. So we drafted out a document, which I'm going to put in the chat, how we can help these other workgroups onboard members. If there's anything that the Onboarding workgroup can do or anything, just something to help make people feel more comfortable and get onboarded into the various workgroups better. So that's basically what we talked about in our last meeting. And we have another meeting this Thursday. So everyone is welcome.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to the AI Sandbox with Fly. So Fly, all yours.
Yes, yes, yes. AI Sandbox this week will be at 16 UTC. So it's a bit of an amended time to what's on the slideshow. But yeah, come along, we'll be focusing on knowledge graphs this week and exploring that. Should be quite fun. We'll see if we can create a project out of it. Yeah, everyone's welcome regardless of your experience. Come play, see you then.
Thank you very much. I can't help but notice that it overlaps with 30 minutes with the Treasury Guild's two-hour session. So that might need a little wiggling room. But I'm sure we got that sorted.
Ah, yeah, nice also that.
Cool. Yeah, so yeah, whether, well, the, the calendar will be the most up-to-date source of truth on the goals. Awesome. That brings us to the Writers' workgroup. And I think Konichi is not in the room currently. Is there anybody from the Writers' workgroup that can share a little?
I attended. So we, in the beginning, went over some of the articles that have been released recently and just concluded that they were received really, really well. Then we discussed the types of content that we're, that we wanted to post. And we had a Q and A for the new members, as far as I remember.
That's accurate. Yeah, then thanks for stepping up there, being one of those new members. So yeah, good stuff. Thank you very much. Then next would be the Video workgroup. And I keep putting monthly updates, sorry, Rojo. I don't want to put you on the spot for a monthly update.
It's okay for being an old list. Yeah, the monthly update should be next week. So I look forward to that. Yeah, for the Video workgroup, we met last week. We had a short update on the, on the weekly town hall summaries we started doing. If you don't know what that is, you can check out our YouTube channel, Instagram, TikTok, Twitter, or X, sorry. And you will find those little one-minute videos where Peter talks about what the town hall has been about. So if you ever miss a town hall, you can just check one of these to get like a small, let's say, a small summary on what's going on. Besides that, we talked also about the onboarding, the new onboarding task, which is much clearer, I would say. Perhaps Judith can attest to that. She's one of our new members, or one of the new to-be members, I guess. But yeah, we have three people going through the onboarding as we speak, which is great. We also have a new task for making the quarterly, that will be done, the quarterly video, that will be done by Lily, Lily Cupcake from the Video workgroup. I look forward to that video as well. We have a couple of videos coming in as well. And there is a new collaboration going on with the Writers' workgroup on Twitter. So that's about managing Twitter and just rolling out content that is synchronized between the two workgroups and like trying to work on the same topics when it comes to content. And yeah, that's about it.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, we have the Education workgroup. Tommy.
We, we are currently working on educating people about puppy milk dogs. And this is one of them. This is little Mama, a rescue from Florida. And she's just finally becoming a dog. She now walks and she can sit in my lap without biting me and I can show you the scars. So don't do puppy milts. That's a public service message has been brought to you by the ambassadors of SNET. However, our education group has been working the last couple of three weeks now on creating a series of educational videos for elevating or lifting up ambassadors to be more of a outward-focused group. We had two people that did homework this week and created the in-video workgroups. I did one on the overall ecosystem. And Peter did one specifically on Rejuve, which was a much better, much better video in my opinion. However, there has been over the last three weeks, some community questioning and pushback, for lack of a better word, as to whether ambassadors actually need education on specific spinoffs in the project. And so it has been suggested that a focus groups be possibly created to do entry-level 101 type educational videos. And to, it has been suggested to do a community polling to see if you feel that we should educate ambassadors towards more of elevator speech, a media, a media-type presence, so you can, you know, say do AMAs. So we meet on Mondays. It was, it's been lively the last couple of weeks. And hopefully this week I can get to do another video that takes some of the things we learned this last week and continue down the journey until we fully decide as a community which direction to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, yeah, that concludes the workgroup updates. Thanks everybody for chiming in there. Then a couple of reminders I do want to call attention to. One being that applications for the Supervisory Council election are still open. And they will close coming Sunday, Sunday 1st of October. That's right there. There was a reason why I put that on the, on the screen. Yeah, so until September, you can apply. As of now, I think we've got eight proposals. We need a bunch more. So yeah, please do consider applying yourself or if you happen to know somebody which you feel is a great fit, then by all means, please suggest them. I see on the slides, I've been slacking on slides, I can't, can't ignore that. Well, the, the video of the AMA last Thursday is online as well. And that's basically what I wanted to call out there. I touched on Treasury sessions already. Yeah, just to point at it again, Thursday at 14:30 PM UTC and Friday at 12. And yeah, I can't resist but also calling out the Catalyst Swarm video. They made an overview video of all they did and how they progressed over the years, 21 until now. Yeah, just go watch it. You should, I don't know, it was really nice to see and throw them a like and subscribe and all that jazz. It's, I don't know, it was just awesome to see. And I think you should all watch it. So I'll comment it below the video as well. And then, yeah, I do want to check on the translation side of things for potentially adding Arabic and Turkish to our, what, languages we do translate into. And I figured, let's just go ahead and get a temperature check on the, on the tunnel. So anybody strongly in favor or against, please do speak up. What do you think? Also, if you have a mild opinion, that's also fine to share.
I, I have a strong opinion that we should definitely add languages that hit big populations, such as the Arabic language, the Turkish. And I know there's been some questioning about some Indian dialects. Though people, it's like German, you know, a lot of Germans speak English. So do we translate German? A lot of Indians speak English, so do we translate, you know, to different languages? But I, I say yes to these two at the very least and go from there.
Alright, Rojo, you have your hand up?
Well, I'm quite biased in this because I do speak both languages. And especially, I'm also a native speaker of Arabic. So I'm strongly, very strongly in favor of that. I mean mainly because I do see, and this applies to Arabic and Turkish. Like both languages have like very large communities that have some percentage that speak English, but English is not very popular. Like you might find in some countries, for example, I did comment on the Hindi, the Hindi one. So there was attempts to perhaps add Hindi. And I did comment that the majority of Indians that had any sort of education do know English. And their main, let's say, language that they use on the internet is English. There are very few content, technical content especially, that is in, that is in Hindi, in my opinion. I do have a lot of friends from that community as well, kind of know. And that's not the case for Turkish or Arabic. Especially, for example, if you look at Turkish, like most of the content about Bitcoin, about Ethereum or whatever, that is consumed in the local, you know, in the, in the country is in Turkish. People generally do not speak English in the street or even consume that much English, to be honest, as a general statement. And a very similar statement could be said about Arabic.
Thanks for that. Anybody else in the room having thoughts on the topic broadly speaking? Go for it, Sugar.
Yeah, I'm in favor of having the Arabic and Turkish and any other language, so long as we have a large community to consume the materials we bring out. So no objection here from me.
That's great to hear. Yeah, I just wanted to note, like, we don't have a formal process for adding languages to the languages we do support. But based on this and combined with that budget-wise, it's not a huge impact. It's relatively cheap to, to offer additional languages. In my mind, it would suffice to simply have consent during tunnel and simply go ahead and start doing that. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, for me, I guess in terms of decision-making, I think like consent is good enough if no one has any strong objections. Yeah, sounds cool.
Alright, then, well, as a formality, let's have a final check on, on strong objections because I think they're not, there aren't any, but a quick check. Do speak up if you feel, well, doubtful or have strong objections. And I believe, starting pretty much now, we'll start offering Arabic and Turkish translations as well. That's pretty awesome. Cool. I think, yeah, happy to, to at least give it a try. I mean, just noting about, well, a month ago, I would say, a month and a half maybe, we added Indonesian. And also, we did not like, well, we do need to keep a proper track of numbers. Like if we add a new language and it's only seeing like 10% readership of other languages, yeah, then at some point we might need to reconsider. Yeah, so just noting that it's not a given that forever would only keep adding and adding and adding. At the same time, quite happy to, not gonna lie. So that's the first part on translations. And then there's another topic where I felt, well, let's simply check in with the town hall and see if there's opinions on it. And that relates to MindPlugs. It's a combination of both the Ambassador Program having more capacity than articles to translate, combined with MindPlugs looking for translations. So then, yeah, I was thinking how to, yeah, we can just combine it. Yeah, basically the idea there would be for the translation workgroup to start translating articles from MindPlugs site. There's one, I'm not sure how to say it, gaffe it is not the right word, but on the, on the budget side of things, MindPlugs has not spun off officially yet. So from their side, it would be optimal to look into a solution where we could somehow front the rewards for this. And then at a point after their, them spinning off, their token generation event, which is also a fundraising effort, they would be able to repay. And yeah, that's also something I would like a temperature check on. I'm not sure if that's elaborate enough to ask for opinions, but if not, please.
How much articles do they need translated or how much work is involved there? And do we have the capacity? How much translators do we have?
Well, Sugar, would you mind answering that? I can give ballpark estimates, but Sugar is leading the translation workgroup. So if you want, go for it.
Yeah, we have about 10 to 12 translators. And most times we have just seven translations or in a month, we could have up to maybe 14 or 21 translations. That's, that's one article, maybe two or three articles in a month and then to seven languages. So we have like 21 translations at most currently. So each translation.
Capacity? Sorry? So we do have capacity for taking, to take on more work?
Yes, we do. We have, we have less translations and we have more translators. So we need, we need more work.
Oh, well, that does, that sounds quite fitting then. So I'm all for it.
Okay, great. So on the budget side of things, it's not so much. At least $1,000 a month. It's what the translation workgroup currently takes. So I don't know, TiVo is not here to tell me if it's too much or not.
I didn't catch the number, honestly.
I don't think that's accurate though. I think it's a couple of hundreds. It's not in a thousand.
No, if, if we hit maximum of three articles, that's like 21 translations. Yeah, 21. Yeah, so if, let's say, I bet you sometimes we have translations that are up to $25 for a translation. So we just take the maximum and when we budget. So if we have an average of $20 translation, that's about, yeah, $500. And we have the translator supports who, who helped to put these translations into the forum. They also get. Uh, they also get paid for that work too. So plus or minus a thousand.
There we go. I thought you said eight thousand, but it's eight thousand. That makes all the difference.
Just one, one thousand.
Understood. Okay. That, that makes a little bit more sense. I was like, ooh, okay. Um, well, the, the thing is here, um, budget wise, like, um, this would be paid for by Mindplex, only not, uh, directly right now. So in a way we would be fronting that, um, with our own budget. And that, that is something, um, well, and maybe it's a bigger topic than just to now have a temperature check on. I don't, don't mean to fully finalize that decision because, well, there, there might be some. I don't know. It might be more complicated than I think it is. Sugar, go for it.
Yeah. So I, uh, my last discussion with Ian, we, he talked about reaching out to Mindplex. I don't know if he has done that since he's in the room. Maybe he could elaborate on that.
Ian, are you with us?
Oh, sorry. I missed a question.
Um, well, Sugar, could you repeat?
Yeah, I just, we just wanted to know, um, if you'd be able to discuss with Mindplex and, um, what's the position?
Uh, yeah, I can reach out. I haven't spoken to Mindplex yet, but yeah, certainly very happy to, uh, speak to them.
Uh, Tommy? Tommy, I see you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm just wondering. I, I know Fly, uh, last week in ideation, we were looking for more tasks, uh, for explorers and, and new people. So that would be a solution. Um, but the overriding question I have is, um, how much are we going to bill, uh, Mindplex, uh, for? Uh, keeping in mind that, uh, besides the, the direct expense of whatever the translation is, you also have, uh, treasury costs and, and percentages there. So. Uh, and do we get paid in, in, um, their token, whatever it is? Since we're not part of the TGE?
Well, we, I'm not sure what you mean with not being part of the TGE, but I, I do get the question, I think. Um, I, I think, I mean, th- th- these are things like practically speaking, we probably need to make a little contract or something like. I, I guess I, I do fully trust them. Uh, that's not the issue, but, but on things like, um, then in my mind, we would do it at the same rate as we do our own translations. Um, but that in itself can be a discussion, right? I mean, if we want to. Yeah, it, it would be an offer, I guess we would make and maybe there would be a counter offer, something like that. I'm not sure. Um, I imagine from their side, it's simplest, um, to pay with, um, their own token after TGE. Um, whether that's, um, then gets changed into AGIX or if we do the tasks and include like, like that could also be a solution. Like if simply mentioning on the task, like this task is only rewarded after the TGE of Mindplex and it will be in X amount of tokens. And, and yeah, this, this is all to be determined, I think, and, and we should discuss. Uh, Rojo, go for it.
I was just gonna suggest. I mean, I don't know if you would like to close the topic, but on, on the same topic, I, I wanted to suggest to, to have the original payment, I mean, the original fees that we, that are paid to, you know, to, to translate and everything. And on top of that, as, uh, Tommy mentioned, uh, I think 1.5 or 2% for the treasury plus another 5% for the infrastructure that was set up to be able to do this whole thing. Uh, and that should go to the investor program, obviously.
Yeah, I can, uh, I can see that making sense, uh, for sure. And, and yeah, okay. So I, I think for now, like in this, in this current town hall, we won't get to the final, uh, numbers there. Uh, that, that seems a bit rushed maybe. And also noting that Mindplex would need to agree with, uh, whatever we come up with. Um, yeah, I don't mind, uh, giving some more space on the topic if there's more opinions on it. Uh, but just noting that we, yeah, I, I think it's best to not get to a final conclusion, uh, right now. Or maybe that's enough on the topic. I think simplest, uh, oh, sorry, go for it.
I was just gonna say, yeah, the, it sounds, sounds cool. Sounds like a nice thing. I guess there's questions that just need to be hashed out in a, in a meeting. It sounds cool.
Yeah, I think best would be simply to get Mindplex in a call and then go from there, uh, at the translation workgroup. Or maybe a, a separate session as to not, uh, push the weekly, uh, agenda into another week. Um. Yeah, cool. All right. Um. Anything else on translations? Well, we're still at the topic. And if not, I think I'll move on. And it's moving on into the open round, which is a more generic check on anything we should be touching on right now. Any questions, any ideas, any things you want the temperature check on, uh, in the town hall? Because right now that's the moment. Judith, you raise your hand.
Um, I just wanted to note that I saw that someone added all the events to the Discord so that it's very visible and I think it's fantastic. And I hope that can continue week after week. So whoever did that, I like it.
Uh, that's Tavos work, uh, and it's a bot, so it, it will continue.
Oh, perfect. Awesome.
Automatically.
Does anyone know like how long the voting goes on for the deep funding stuff? I got a little sidetracked because I had to start school. So last couple of weeks have been crazy. I'm just wondering if there'd be notice, if there's a cutoff date for voting.
Uh, I do. Uh, first of all, the, the, the voting, uh, needs to start still. Uh, so that's the thing. Um, it starts at, uh, the second of October. So that's a Monday top of mind. Yes. And then, um, it runs until, I think it's a full week. Um, let me confirm. Yeah, October, uh, 8th, uh, end of day UTC.
So what's the difference between that and the voting? Because when I'm looking on there, I see people have been voting on stuff. Is there a difference between that and what you're talking about?
Um, yeah, the, the voting on the Sway portal is, um, is not token based. It's not, um, it, it's more intended to be like, it's more like a rating than, than the actual vote. Uh, so yeah, lots of, uh, votes coming up, uh, with that one. And after that, um, supervisory council. And that, that will be on a separate portal, actually. It's, um, it's currently not configured for deep funding round three yet, but on voting.singularity.net.io, uh, you can connect your wallet. Um, yeah, then it's actual, um, I think it's quadratic. So it's not, uh, one token, one vote, but yeah, it's, it's token based voting. Any further questions, shout outs? Wishes, hobbies? And if not, I think, uh, yeah, it's, uh, it's good to conclude. Um, the slide mentions that the next town hall is, uh, one hour ago. Uh, that's not accurate. It would be, uh, one week from now. Um, I really hope to see you, uh, joining the next one. And in the meantime, we'll talk on Discord or in any of the 12 upcoming calls in between now and the next town hall. Thanks all for joining.
Uh, Peter, can we get the summary?
Uh, yes, but I'll stop the recording and make a separate one for them because I keep screwing up the format. Oh, sorry. Uh, Saint Andrew raising his hands or her hand. Go for it.
Uh, hi everyone. Um, this is my, this is my first time. Sorry. I can't, uh, turn on my video. Can I be heard?
No worries there. Thanks a lot. We can hear.
Okay, good. Uh, so this is my first time joining the, um, town hall meetings. So just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Andrew, a graphic designer and emotion designer. I'm not sure what else I'm supposed to say. Oh, yeah. Nice to be here.
Well, good to have you. What did, what did bring you here, if I may ask? Uh, I'm not sure if you got me, but, uh, what, what brought you here, Saint Andrew?
Oh, I didn't, no, I didn't, I didn't get you, no.
Okay. Check. Uh, I'll take that rather not disclose maybe. Sugar, go for it.
Yeah, I would just say welcome to Andrew. Welcome to the program. And, uh, we just wanted to know, how did you find us?
Um, how did, okay, it was, um, through an a- article on Medium, I guess. Yeah, it was an article on Medium talking about the ambassador program. Now that's why I got interested and joined the town meeting. So yeah.
Okay, great. Welcome. So to get started, you could check in our channel, the Getting Started channel. It has everything that you need to know. And if you have any questions, you can just put it out there in the general chat, the ambassador general channel there. So welcome once again and, um, make yourself comfortable, ask the questions, join whatever meetings you like.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Cool. So for a recap of Ambassador Tunnel 67, um, we started off with the workgroup at that, uh, which I want fully re- uh, repeat. You'll have to watch the full recording for that. And, um, after that, a little shout out, uh, to both, uh, Catalyst Swarm for making an awesome overview video of their, um, past, uh, two and a half years of, well, work. Um, and a shout out to the supervisory council, uh, still being open to applications. If you are or know somebody that should be in the supervisory council, please, um, don't hesitate and, uh, enter a proposal for your, uh, for your application. After that, uh, we touched on translations and we found consent for, um, adding both Arabic and Turkish to our supported languages. And we had a little discussion on, um, supporting Mindplex Magazine with translations. Um, general sentiment was that yes, let's do it. Uh, but there are some, um, some particulars to, to be hashed out, um, for example, on finances. And I think that pretty much sums it up. So yeah, thanks for joining.